Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Cheryl, would you do a roll call, please?
Ryan Carver.
Here.
Ryan Kern.
Yup.
Bob Knight.
Yup.
Randy Miller. Angie Davis.
Yes. Okay, staff and citizen comment. Each speaker or speaker representing a group will have two minutes. Personnel and confidential individual student issues will not be heard. Is there anyone there?
No.
For comments?
No, Amy.
No?
No.
Okay, so moving on, item two, consent agenda. Proof of giving public notice, personal notice sent to each board member, public notice to the Tri-County Press, Benton Post Office in Benton School District. Approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on October fourteenth, 2020. Approve the minutes of the special board meeting held on October twenty-eighth, 2020, and approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Cheryl, please note that Randy Miller was on at six oh one.
Got it. Anyone, is anyone opposed to that motion? Okay, motion carried. Item three, reports, the treasurer's report.
Okay. Well, at the end of September, we had cash in bank was seven hundred and three thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, twelve cents. Our income was nineteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, seventy-three cents. And our expenses were three hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, seventy-three cents. And our balance at the end of October was three hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars, twelve cents. And we're coming up on November, and November happens to be the time of the year when our balance gets as low as it really will throughout the year because it's before we collect taxes at the end of the year. And our expenditures are, of course, still continuing the way they are, so. If you look at your revenue sheet, at the end of Fund Ten, since we have approved the budget, we now have the percentages that we usually talk about. This year, as far as our budget's concerned, we've received twenty-one point nine seven percent of our revenue. Last year at this time, we had received twenty-four percent, and two years ago, we were at twenty-five percent. And I don't know exactly what the dates were of those meetings, so they could have been just a little later than the month that made the difference. Our expenditures, right now, we're at eighteen point two percent. Last year, we were at nineteen point one nine percent, I'm sorry, nineteen percent, and two years ago, we were at twenty percent. So running pretty, pretty similar to what we have in the past for those items.
All right, thanks, Todd. Moving on, item B, the athletic director's report.
All right, since last month, we finished up girls volleyball season. We did have one meet or match that we were not able to complete because of the COVID. Unfortunately, that's kind of going to be the situation at this time. We're looking forward to starting girls basketball practice this coming Monday. We'll also be starting gymnastics this coming Monday. We have two gymnasts who'll be going to Hazle Green. Boys basketball will start the following week, and at this time, we do not have any wrestlers that I'm aware of. Junior high boys basketball started practice two weeks ago, and their first two games have been moved back because of COVID situation with the sixth graders. We currently have four eighth graders, four seventh graders, and four sixth graders, although one of the eighth graders is at home on... Help me out, what's the word?
Quarantine.
Quarantine, that's the word. Thank you. So, we're moving forward as best we can with athletics at this time. Scheduling has been kind of a nightmare. There's been lots of changes already, and I anticipate that we will have a hard time keeping schedules up to the minute as we go through the COVID situation with rescheduling games. But we will do the best we can with rescheduling all games and putting everything in place. At this time, we have twenty games for the girls and twenty games for the boys scheduled.
You have a number on how many girls are coming up?
At this time, we're anticipating fourteen or fifteen girls. So we're anticipating enough girls and enough boys to have JV and varsity. Any other questions?
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
You bet.
Item C, the principals' report.
Just wanted to give you an update, first of all, on our music program. We are giving, we do have an instructor coming in one day a week to give instrumental lessons to grades, students in grades five through eight, so that's taking place every Friday. End service, we had, we've had two end services since our last meeting, and we have been working on compassion resilience with staff, which is a mental health program. Very well received and very much needed. I think the staff has embraced a couple of the activities that we've had to do and made them really think about all the stresses that they have in their life right now, and how their jobs have changed. So that's been very beneficial. We just wanted to also let you know, we're still experimenting with the best technology components to serve virtual students. While the teachers are instructing face-to-face, we've been experimenting with microphones and speakers and different things like that. And I think we have some good combinations going, but we're still learning, that's still a learning process. Last week, our PK through six students were home, learning virtually, and it was, it was a challenge on all aspects, but we made it through it. I think by Tuesday afternoon, we had smooth sailing ahead for the rest of the week, so. Kudos to our families who are at home with their kids and also to our teachers. I did want to mention, we were able to purchase the Go Guardian program, which is something where we can monitor the devices. I think we initially thought the program was going to be more just watching what kids were doing, but it became a very, very useful tool as parents were at home, and we couldn't figure out what was going wrong with the devices while they were at home, and I was able to, to pull up Go Guardian, see what the kid was doing on the screen, and then we can walk the parents through how to get through the issues. So that, that's very, very helpful. And I want to give a shout out, many, many thanks to our staff for all their time and effort put into the first quarter of the school year. We are all learning every day, every minute of every day, and I'm very grateful for their time and their patience that they've put forward, so thank you. And last but not least, I hope you were able to watch our Veterans Day program today online. Thank you to Mr. Kern, to Gail Wolf, Nick Brandt, and Isabel Lane Camp for putting together different pieces of the program and making that a great production for us. We missed having the veterans in our building today. That's a relief, that's probably one of the best events that we put on during the school year, so we're looking forward to next year, when hopefully we can bring those people back into our building and celebrate. That's it, thank you.
Lisa, I was able to watch the Veterans Day video today, and it was very well done. Great job by the kids. I know Gail made a lot of phone calls, but I thought it was very well done. Moving on, item D, superintendent's report.
Okay, first of all, and I want to read, I want to build on that as well. I think the Veterans Day program was very well done. Hopefully, anybody that hasn't gotten a chance to, to watch it can still do that. But it was very well done, and I think very, very well deserved by the veterans of, of our area. I did receive my lifetime license, so after sending that in, the DPIs caught up enough to where they, they notified me of that. So thank you again for your report, as far as helping me obtain my lifetime license. I sat in on a meeting yesterday where the DPI submitted their biennial budget, so they were reviewing it with superintendents across the state. They are asking for a lot of funds. I don't know how that's going to turn out. I think it'll be a, an uphill battle, but they're, they're asking for quite a bit, and if they get a portion of that, I think we should be sitting in a situation where hopefully, at least they're not cutting the budget next year. I do want to say through all of this, the parents, when I'm talking to them on the phone, have been outstanding. It's no fun calling a parent, telling them they have to come pick their child up from school, and to this point, we've had very little resistance and very, very good understanding by the parents, so we appreciate that. You know, if we do call, it's in the best interest of everybody, and, and they've been very, very good about understanding. The staff has also been very good, you know, sometimes doing the two jobs as far as teaching live and teaching virtual, and at this point, it's, most of them are doing that on a consistent basis. They've got some virtual students anyway, so. I think it makes their job a lot harder, but they're really handling it well, and, you know, making, making a go of it. And one of the reasons they are handling it well is Lisa fields, Mrs. Lawrence fields most of the questions on that as far as the technology, and she's the one that heads off, you know, most of the problems when it comes to that, so. She's kind of keeping the, the ball rolling there, so we appreciate everything she's doing as well.
That's it for your report then, Todd?
Yup, yup.
Okay, thank you. Item four, discussion and action items. A, bills for payment.
Yeah, I think you should have a list of checks. And the second page of that is the credit card bill, so please note, on the check sheet, there is a backside to that, so when you make a motion, the last check was thirty-four, yeah, thirty-four, six, thirty-five. Any questions on any of the checks?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills, check number three, four, five, eight, zero, through three, four, six, three, five.
I'll second it.
Okay, was there a second on that?
Bob.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carried. Item B, outdoor education and overnight trip.
We have Kyle Kern here tonight to talk about this. And this was stopped roughly ten years ago, so I'd like Kyle to help get from here, and any questions, he should be able to answer.
Yup, so, like you said, it was something that we used to do. We used to have fifth and sixth graders go in the spring. I'd like to do it in the fall for a couple reasons. One, I think it would just benefit our students throughout the school year a little better. Talking, Mr. Dressler and I didn't want to talk about this, and we think fifth graders in the spring, or in the fall, might just be a little too young for the trip. And then, after talking it over with him some more, and Mrs. Lawrence and Mr. Bastian, we, we think maybe eighth graders might be a little too old for this trip, so we, I'm settling maybe on sixth and seventh graders going every other year. I talked to Canyon Camp, and I, I put the pricing in there. One thing that we can probably take off of there for that pricing is the archery section for four hundred dollars. We have our own archery equipment, and our very own Mr. Dressler is certified level one archery instructor, and he is willing to come down and teach the archery unit, so we do not have to rent their equipment or any other instructors. So that's one thing that we could knock off of there. I know in the past, they used to charge around twenty-five dollars per kid to go on this trip. I'm not opposed to that. I'm not, I'm not in favor of going around and asking businesses for money for this trip. I think we do that a lot already, and I'd like to try to avoid that if possible, but I also don't want to be, you know, taking, you know, more than twenty-five dollars per kid. And that would probably be more for like meals and stuff like that, like we charge them for their lunch tickets and stuff like that. I'll wrap up here, and then if you guys have any questions, because I put most of the stuff that I have in your packet, but I did talk to Angie Staluka about providing lunches, and she also talked about coming down and cooking dinner there every night for us. It'd be two, two nights for supper, and she's willing to come down as long as it fits into her schedule and take care of that stuff for us. And then I got a couple chaperones myself, and then I've talked to Mrs. Dressler and Mrs. Richardson, both expressed interest in coming and spending at least one night, if not both nights there, as staff chaperones. And then we would probably take along some high school kids that are NHS or, based on their merit, able to come and help us out, so. Yeah, any questions?
It was a great program. It was a great program when we did it before. Real successful, kids enjoyed it. I think it's a real good idea to rekindle it.
Yeah, as far as I meant to mention for tonight, what I'd be looking for, if not tonight, by the next meeting, I'd like to get these dates locked in with Canyon Camp, because right now, they're pretty open, but I'm sure as we get closer to the end of the year, people are going to start booking out, and those dates that I have in there work really well for us. There's no home football game that week, so it's not going to be homecoming or anything like that. And as Mr. Dressler and Mr. Knight can tell you, the earlier we book this, the better for a lot of reasons for athletics and stuff as well, so. I'd like to get these dates on there, and if we were to cancel for COVID reasons or whatever, it's, we'd lose two hundred dollars, so.
It's a good idea.
I did, I did not hear Miss Bob Knight's comment. You may clarify that for me?
I just said, Todd, that when, when I was teaching here, that we used to do it every, I think every other year we did it. And kids loved it, parents liked it. It was just a great experience for them.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And I agree with you too, Bob. I think there's a lot of kids that don't get the opportunity for these activities. If we don't do it, and I think it's a good thing for us to get back into our rotation again and, and offer it.
I think sometimes we forget that some kids never get an opportunity to do a lot of things. We just kind of take it for granted that our kids got to do it. The same with the fishing trip. I can't believe how many kids have never been on a boat or, you know, had a fishing rod in their hands. So I think it's a good idea that we give them the opportunity. Besides that, it's not much money.
Todd, so what, I, just to be clear, what are we looking for tonight, just to put the dates, from the dates?
I think we need to make a, because Kyle, you need to set the dates and therefore a non-refundable deposit, correct?
Correct. I'd need to sign a contract for those dates, basically.
I think a motion to approve the, the trip as presented would be appropriate.
I make a motion to approve the trip as presented by Mr. Kern.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, motion carried. Item C, senior class trip.
And we should have some seniors there to present.
Taylor Maury is here, as well as Clara Tiedemann.
So for our clean, okay, for our senior class trip, we would like to go to the Kalahari. The dates we have chosen are Wednesday, May fifth, and the time, we would leave at seven and come back at ten PM. Our chaperones potentially would be Mr. Kern and Mrs. Humm, and our bus driver would be Eric Maury, who is volunteering, so we would not have to pay.
Uh-oh. Don't use your screen.
When it comes to prices, it's sixty dollars per person. We estimated about fourteen people coming, and that adds up to eight hundred and four dollars. For the bus, it's two hundred and four dollars round trip, fifty dollars for gas, and we took out also a hundred and fifty dollars for dinner on the way home, so.
So the big question, girls, have you got any money?
Yes.
Little over two thousand.
A little, a little over two thousand dollars.
We didn't have a prom last year.
Yeah.
They have a lot of money.
They have more money than most years, and also, we're planning on cookie dough sales as a fundraiser. We are interviewing cookie dough companies at this time. We've only had one response.
You're not going house to house, are you?
You know, I don't know what we're going to do. That's a great question. I, I don't know if we can do a virtual sale. I don't know how that will go over. So, the good news is, we don't need to raise tons of money for the senior class. They're, they're in a pretty good financial situation right now. But they do have some expense coming up with the prom also, and then we also have some small expenses that are associated with graduation. So, we don't want to spend it all on the class trip, and we can't budget for all on the class trip. But I think what they've put together is in line with what we've done in the past, and financially, I think it's very responsible with what they're spending.
And this would be easily canceled if...
Or adjusted, adjusted, yes, if we needed to. Yeah, it's a one-day trip. The people at the Kalahari, I've worked with them in the past. They generally give a group discount. They're very easy to get along with, and like you said, if we had to cancel, I'm certain they would like us to reschedule.
Tradition, right?
Yeah, I mean, as far as senior class trip, this is one of the trips that we typically would do. If they've got a little more money, they might be able to go to Chicago. But this is pretty much the, the annual trip for seniors.
I'll make a motion to approve the senior class trip as presented. I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion approved. Thank you, ladies. Item D, review of district financial audit.
Okay, so every year, we have Boardman and Clark in July do our financial audit, and then they come back and they give us suggestions. So I've shared those with you, and I've also shared with you this, in the supplement, some things that we've done to take care of some of their suggestions. So most of their suggestions are on page seven. The first one is we have cash, cash dispersments, and basically what that comes down to, and it's one that they usually suggest to us every year, we really don't have manpower to do what they're asking us to do. Many districts have a, a bookkeeper, they have a business manager, they have administrative, multiple administrative assistants. We've got a books, bookkeeper and administrative assistant, so to have three tiers there is pretty tough for us to do. So that's why that one continues to come up. The next one is trust agreements, and this, this happens in two different places. We're going to resolve that one by moving the funds that are in Fund Seventy-two to Fund Twenty-one, which I'm not going to go into real detail with that. If it stays in Seventy-two, we have to have a complete plan. And not, not just a plan, but we also have to do a few other things legally because of a recent law that was passed in the last year and a half, so. If we move it to Fund Twenty-one, then we can manage it how, basically how we've been managing it. An investment policy, I will be working on that with Neil and all, and with our audit agency, and and hopefully we'll get that solved, and love an investment policy to take care of that suggestion. Did I say Boardman and Clark before? Johnson and Block, I'm sorry, it's Johnson and Block.
I was going to ask you when you get done, but...
Sorry about that. Data recovery, they, they suggested this last year as well. I brought this up to our tech guys. We do have a data backup, and our tech guy said that in order to do it, it's, it's quite a cost to, to basically have everything backed up and to run through that check. everything backed up and to run through that check because it's quite a, quite a bit of man hours to do it. So, you know, they're not worried about it. We have everything backed up. And that's why we haven't done it, just because of the costs of it. I mean, if there's some interest, I can look into it more and see what the actual cost would be. But Tyson TC Networks has told us basically that we should be in good shape. And that it's not necessarily something we really need to do. Community service, that suggestion that they gave us, we will, we'll be complying with that suggestion and changing what we do currently to do what they've suggested for us. And, and that's basically to run, before we run funds into Fund 10 and then transfer them later in the year. And their suggestion is basically just to run everything to Fund 80, which is our community service fund. So we will be doing that as they've suggested. Food service fund, we're running, we've been running in the negative. And basically their suggestion was to raise prices to get us into the positive, which I don't think that's in the best interest of our school district. To, to get that, to do that, we would have to raise prices significantly. And I think that would put a, a burden on many of the families in the district that I don't think they really need at this point, nor do we need to do it. I think by, by transferring money at the end of the year when we need to, we will. And we'll, we'll be in good, good shape to do that. On page eight, they talk about related party transactions. And one of the things that came up here, and very seldom do we really have a bill that runs this high anyway. We were just over $15,000 when we put in the, the touchless faucets and toilets for this year. And their, their suggestion was that since we have a board, a board member that is in, in charge of the company, that we maybe shouldn't do that. But I do know that we got the job done quickly. And we got the job done very, very efficiently as far as monetary goes. So I know Kern Plumbing and Heating did a quick job on that, did a good job and treated us very well. And then the fiduciary activities. And once again, this is the same thing that we talked about before. To take care of that one, we're going to move stuff from Fund 72 to Fund 21. And that should take care of their suggestion there. So are there any questions on any of that stuff? Overall, I will say that Johnson and Block, Jamie Bryson was the young man that came and did the work for us. And had very, very good things to say how we were running things as far as the financial part of things. So they're very, very impressed.
Awesome. Okay, moving on to item E, appointing board members to fill vacancies.
Okay, with the resignations of two of the board members, we have those positions to fill. I've talked to two people about that. Amanda Williams, who has three children in the district, would like to fill the vacant seat for Mark Coffey. Brian Korleski, who has two children in the district and then two more that will be attending school here at some point. Would also, he'd be interested in filling the seat for Gene O'Neil. If we do appoint them, both of them, along with Angie, would be on the ballot in April. And the way that will work is if, if there's just three people on the ballot, or I guess it doesn't matter however many people on the ballot. The top two vote getters would get the three-year terms. And the third highest vote getter would get the two-year term. So that we don't have a turnover of three board members in one election. So they would, that's how we would stagger that. And I, I do recommend a roll call vote here when the time comes. So it's Amanda Williams for Mark Coffey and Brian Korleski for Gene O'Neil. And I would suggest that we also do separate motions for each member.
So can I get a motion for Amanda Williams?
I'll make a motion that Amanda Williams fills our empty board seat.
I'll second the motion.
And Cheryl, would you do roll call for me?
Bob Knight?
Yep.
Ryan Kern?
Yep.
Randy Miller?
Yes.
Ryan Carver?
Yes.
Angie Davis?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. When, when would they start, Todd?
December, we would swear them in at the December meeting.
Okay. And then can I? Okay, can I get a motion for Brian Korleski?
I'll make a motion that Brian Korleski takes the second vacant seat. I'll second that.
Okay, and Cheryl, would you do roll call again, please?
Bob Knight?
Yes.
Ryan Kern?
Yes.
Randy Miller?
Yes.
Ryan Carver?
Yes.
Angie Davis?
Yes. So motion carried. And they will be, they'll have all their papers and everything done, Todd, then by the December meeting? Ready to go?
Yes, we'll get everything ready to go for that. And they'll be sworn in at the December, December or next meeting if we have a special meeting.
Okay, so the other thing was Mark was the treasurer. Do we need to appoint someone as treasurer before next month?
That's the next item on the agenda.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Okay, so Mark was the treasurer, so with the resignation of him, we need to fill that position. I know three of the five people here right now are already in a officer position. If we want to wait until the next board meeting to fill the treasurer position, we could do that as well. So I guess that's something to discuss here.
See what you're wanting?
Is there someone sitting in the room there that would like to be the treasurer?
No, I'm just, I was going to say we can table it until next time if nobody currently wants it.
I'll volunteer to do it as long as I don't take a note.
There you go.
I can't really hear what this is.
Bob Knight.
Did you, did he make a motion to table it, was that what it was?
No, I nominate Bob Knight.
Okay, all right.
Oh, okay. Is there a second?
Yep.
Okay, do we need a roll call for that or just?
Yes, I suggested roll call, yes.
Okay. Cheryl, can you do that for me?
Yep. Ryan Carver?
Yes.
Randy Miller?
Yes.
Bob Knight?
Aye, I stand. I always wanted to say no.
Ryan Kern. Randy?
Ryan Kern.
Yes.
And Angie Davis.
Enthusiastically, yes. Motion carried.
Did you get Randy?
Okay, welcome new treasurer. Item G, COVID, considering actions.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen in a second here. I did, I did share a document with you guys that was, a, a, a survey from CISA. That's been updated and that gets updated on a daily basis whenever somebody goes in and, and changes their plan. So I'll share that. And I just want to put, put this out there for discussion on basically anything that the board may want to discuss right now and, and possibly take action on. So I'm going to share my screen, I'll pull that down. And. Okay, so some of the things they had over here, I'm going to try to blow this up. I'm guessing, does that need to be blown up?
No.
Zoomed in?
It's good.
Can you a little bit?
Can I what?
Can you do it a little bit?
Yes.
A little?
I don't know how to do that. Oops. Kyle, help me out here, man.
Is it the three bullets at the top?
Is it?
I think it's at the top, Todd, that 100%, that's at the left-hand side.
Okay, there we go, good, thank you.
Yep.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay, so first of all, one of the questions that is on the survey is we used to switch to virtual the week of Thanksgiving, either planned or as a preventative measure. And I'm just going to, I'll scroll down after I think, if I can read fast, as fast as I can read, probably everybody else can read that fast. So looking at these schools. And going to Cuba City through Highland, some of them have not answered yet.
What's the heating metrics?
That is basically a calculation that they are doing. I don't know exactly what their numbers are, but it's based on a percentage of students, I believe, or public that are currently infected. I don't know their exact formula, but I have heard him talk about it before. And it's based on, you know, several different factors.
I don't, I don't know if you've heard this update, Todd, but today Dems is going virtual starting tomorrow for two weeks again. Not the high school though, just elementary, middle school right now.
So that's one of the questions. If the question is, is yes, of course, for coming back or taking the week of Thanksgiving or the week after Thanksgiving off. Then the next question is when do you plan to return? Will you allow sports to practice in your facilities if you go virtual? So we've got several interests here as well. If I go too fast, just tell me to slow down, please.
So let's say yes for Cuba City and yes that they're allowing sports?
Yes, they plan to go through Thanksgiving and they do plan to continue to practice or play games.
Just a question, what's, what's, what's our ticket policy going to be for basketball?
It hasn't been finalized yet, but the, and Jeff kind of touched on that.
We had a faculty director meeting last week and the recommendation from the conference, including Schulzberg, was that we go with two first, two spectators per athlete.
And the principals agreed on the same.
And we also recommended that it be three emission as it was for volleyball. I'm not sure what the principals did with that.
There was some discussion about needing some income at some point, so that was kind of up in the air.
Okay, and then we have the, the questions over here as far as will you allow community groups to use your facilities, youth practices, organizations, et cetera? And then the last one is are you making adjustments to hourly employees if switching virtual custodians, bus drivers, et cetera? I don't know. The last question there, I honestly don't know why that's on this survey. I, I don't know that that has a lot to do with the other, other four questions. But are there any, any discussion that we want to have on any of these items at this point?
What are, what are you and Lisa, what are your thoughts on what's been happening in the numbers and?
I, I, I think based on the discussions we have, if, if we can stay open, I want to stay open. And I, I believe Lisa feels the same way. The, the kids, it could be a limited number, we'd be forced to close. So if we are forced to close, then we're forced to close. But if, if we don't have, you know, much activity, then I think we keep the kids coming and learning, we want to do that.
What's the criteria for, for shutting?
I didn't, I didn't hear that, if somebody could clear that?
What is the criteria for us to shut down? What, what number, what percent, what, what what?
We, basically, what we've done so far is we've looked at close contacts. And if we can't determine, like the week we shut down in elementary, we had, we only had one student there. And we had one staff member. But there were some questions we had as far as what we had for, you know, actual contact. So on that week, we shut down to play it safe, to let things develop a little bit. You know, as, as far as if anybody was sick, we would, hopefully after a week, we would know that. So that was one of the reasons we shut down that week. Also, we had a tough time staffing the building that week. Now, as far as actual numbers to shut down, you know, if, if we could isolate it to one class, say in high school, we would probably shut down just one class. But we haven't laid a, an exact number on when we feel we should shut down or an exact percent at this point. If we would like to do that, we can.
One of the factors of that week that we shut down also was how many of our students had been in close contact, been just home in quarantine with their family. They had not tested positive, but because of family members, those students had to be at home.
I, I think if you go with a, you know, a specific number or a certain percentage, it kind of ties your hands. Takes away some of the flexibility.
And the other thing, if we have, you know, if we have, you know, three or four fourth graders that got, that tested positive, that's a very large percentage of our school compared to greater schools. And I, I don't think it's necessarily a fair way to measure it. Now, if we had three or four fourth graders that did test positive, I, I think you would definitely shut down a fourth grade, for example. But to, to shut down the entire elementary because of that, I, I don't know that that would be necessary.
My feeling is if you and Lisa are willing to take that, that responsibility to, to make that call, I'm good with leaving it in your hands versus putting a number that allows no flexibility. I think you guys make good decisions and.
Well, and part, part of that goes back to our parents. Our parents, the parents have been so supportive and so.
And, and, but you guys know that.
So supportive of everything.
We, for us to put a number on it just doesn't seem to me to make a whole lot of sense. As long as you guys are okay with that responsibility on you.
Also, we.
I would just like to add to that, Ryan, that I know, I know for my, my own personal job, it gets tight. And staff are getting stretched, you know, to where you're struggling to cover everything. I, I would hope that if you and Lisa feel like we're getting to that point and, and you don't have enough to handle it all, that, I mean, I feel pretty good that the board's going to support whatever you need at that time.
And that was, one of the, when we cut down for the seven, or actually ended up being six days because we had the Friday off for our in-service. At least the students had the Friday off. That was one of the factors, it was that the staff was going to be stretched pretty thin. We were going to have subs in the building anyway, so it was time to make that move. And I, I think student-wise, I don't think there was a big risk as far as students being in contact with each other there. So that was, that was a very big factor at that point as far as being able to staff the building with qualified adults. as far as being able to staff the building with qualified adults.
And I think, I mean, it's hard to find subs anyway, but with the numbers going up and up the way they are, I just don't think you're going to see anybody else coming forward, volunteering to want a sub.
Well, and realize a sub has to teach face-to-face and virtual in most of our classrooms anyway.
Right.
That's a lot to ask.
Can I ask a question? If we do go virtual, does that mean athletics will be out?
That's, that would be something that we would have to decide. If the board wants to make a stance on that, we could. Otherwise, we can, we can determine, you know, are there any athletes, say on the boys' basketball team that are affected by, you know, something like that? Or if they're in close contacts, there's, you know...
I'm also thinking specifically...
Go ahead.
For a co-op situation, if Benton is virtual and we're shut down, do we send our athletes over to Southwestern? And likewise, if they're shut down, I'm assuming that we would no longer have gymnastics? But if we're shut down, would our students still be allowed to go participate if the game continues to go on? If the meat goes on?
Well, I mean, if we're shut down and they're not in close contact, then I don't see why they wouldn't be able to attend practice. If Southwestern tells us that if we're shut down, they don't want our kids to come over, then I would say we don't send them over.
Well, and I think, doesn't it go back to also why we shut down? Was it a large number of kids or trouble staffing? Right?
Yeah, I completely agree with that. I mean, there's, it's going to be to look at the situation and see who is in close contact. And if they're going to be quarantined, then obviously in that case, for sure, they wouldn't be sent. And that's unless, you know, if the board wants to move a different direction and if there's going to be a blanket that if we shut down, we don't participate in athletics, then we can certainly do that. I will be honest with you in this, and I've talked to several superintendents from the area here. We have a meeting every week where we speak. And I don't think a whole lot of the transmission is going on in schools. I think, you know, kids are coming to schools, they're in masks. And it's definitely possible, we all know that, of course. But I think with the masks that we're wearing and precautions we're taking, and it's not perfect, I'm not going to sit here and say that kids stay six feet apart all day because if you say it once, you're going to say it a thousand times during the day to spread out and social distance. But I think this is, the school is probably one of the safest places they can be right now.
I would agree with that, probably the cleanest, too. So do we need to take any action on that, Todd, or do you...
No, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. If somebody, if you guys want to take action, we can, by all means, that can be done. But I wanted to put it, I wanted to put it out here. I did not have it on the agenda. That's why we reposted the agenda so that we could discuss it. Because I think it's something that definitely needs to be discussed by the board and questions need to be asked. And hopefully, we're answering them adequately.
Do you guys in the room there, does anybody have any strong opinions on that? Or thoughts?
I trust our administration.
I couldn't understand that.
I trust our administration. I think they'll make good decisions.
Yeah, I would agree with that also.
And we have, I mean, we've got a couple of families where we've asked the parents to keep the kids home just because, you know, we've had parents that have tested negative but have colds. And we said, you know, keep them home anyway just so that when they come to school, they don't spread a cold to a bunch of other kids. And then because they have symptoms, they have to stay home. So, and the parents have been outstanding about saying, okay, yeah, that sounds right. You know, we don't, we don't want to spread colds or any sickness around, you know, and cause kids to have to be out of school.
I think you guys are doing a great job and I think continue on with what you're doing. Does anybody have anything else on that, or do you want to move on?
Well, the only, nothing on that, but the only other thing I just want to move on. I did send an email out for a WASB delegate. It's not, it's really not a very big commitment this year because it's going to be done virtually. Last couple of years, Mark Coffey has done it and he has done it by going to Milwaukee and staying there for a day or two. So if there's anybody that would want to be the WASB delegate, we go over some, geez, I can't think of the word for those right now, resolutions. Talk about if we want to support the resolutions or not and you would simply vote as a representative of our school board. I'll send a reminder out tomorrow for that unless somebody is willing to do that and then I can submit your name to WASB. Bob, you're in the voluntary mood tonight.
Goes with the office, doesn't it?
I just mentioned, I already volunteered, I'm done.
I think it goes with the office.
Well, that's what I was kind of thinking, but I went through them out there.
That ain't happening.
What are our two new board members doing?
They're going to learn.
Okay, and that's, that's all I've got.
Okay, so and I see item H is resignations, but there are none?
Nope.
Excellent. Any future meetings other than the next regular board meeting?
Not at this point.
Okay, so the next regular school board meeting is Wednesday, December 8th at 6:00 PM. I, can I get a motion for adjournment?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, meeting adjourned.